Who's here? Jason Wienerman.
Here.
Sean Blackburn.
Here.
Ken Mossman.
Here.
Mike Perrell.
Here.
Rich Blankish.
Here.
First, Jeff Percham, Chair, here. And Joe Persky, Chris McPersky.
Here.
And Executive Member of the Board. Jason Chrome has contacted us that he cannot join us tonight. The first item on the agenda is Brandon Tracy O'Leary, St. Joseph. Heidi will give for a rezoning request. Heidi will give the staff report.
To consider a rezoning request submitted by Brandon and Tracy O'Leary, St. Joseph, Minnesota, according to Section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone approximately 10 acres from the A40 zoning district to the residential 10 zoning district. Property is part of the southwest half of the southwest quarter, lying north of 270th Street in Section 30, St. Joe Township. Property address is 13264 270th Street, St. Cloud, Minnesota. So they're requesting 10 acres out of a 30-acre parcel to be rezoned to residential 10. The access is from a township road, 270th Street. The land is a mixture of tillable, woods, and wetland. There won't be any setback impacts with the proposed rezoning. There's approximately 21 homes and three registered animal feedlots within a half-mile. Surrounding area is a mix of rural residential lots, agricultural land, and wetland. Surrounding zoning is agriculture 40. The property is not within any overlay districts or areas of concern. The rezoning would allow one additional residential dwelling unit on the property. The land evaluation site assessment score was 59.68. And St. Joe Township did recommend approval of the rezoning. And that's all that I have.
Okay. We'll do the checklist on the members who did a site review. If you did, say yes. If you didn't, say no. Jason Wienerman.
Yes.
Sean Blackburn.
Yes.
Ken Mossman.
Yes.
Mike Perrell.
Yes.
Rich Blankish.
Yes.
Joe Persky.
No, I did not.
And I did. And the staff site visit, if I remember right, was done by Heidi on June 28th. Okay. Any initial questions from commission members?
Mr. Chair, just a question for staff. So this was a 30-acre parcel. Had it been split in the past? Is there any history on... This was an A40, so was it a 40-acre at any time? Or... Oh, Jason Wienerman, District 1, sorry.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wienerman, this is a 30-acre lot of record, is what this is. So it existed prior to the zoning and subdivision ordinance. So that's why it's 30 acres with a home on it. So they were grandfathered in with that one building entitlement. So this would give them one additional building entitlement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions initially? If not, we have the applicant... Whoa, go ahead. Commissioner Persky?
Just for the future, then with one additional development credit, if they were to use that additional credit and cut it into another, what's, 10-acre piece, then that would mean there would be one 10-acre parcel that would be... Remain ag, but they could not build on it because it would be agricultural? Is that correct then?
Heidi?
What that would end up being is a new 10-acre parcel. And then there will be a remaining 20 acres, which there are two different parcel numbers for it, but they are combined parcels. So for zoning and subdivision, it's all treated as one parcel because of how it's been bought and sold in the past. It's all one lot of record. They're not separate for sale, so...
Correct. And as I'm looking at the diagram up there, I see a black line halfway up there.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
I'm just announcing you so we know who you are.
Okay. Sometimes I question that.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll remind you.
And so as I'm looking at the diagram, then that line in the center divides it two pieces, but they'll be as one. Just to me, looking at the layout of the other lots there, would make more sense if it was divided the other way because the other ones then would have... That would then also have access to the road. But I mean, that's something in the future, but I'm just wondering, you know, what the plan might be. Do you have any plan for the future of the property?
Let's wait for that question.
If you don't mind, until we introduce them in there on the record.
Let's go to the applicants. Brandon and Tracy O'Leary, please state your name for the record address, please.
I'm Brandon O'Leary, and I'm from 31164 115th Avenue, St. Joseph. And this is Sherri Klein.
She can announce, if you don't mind, then we got the tape recognition.
Yeah, Sherri Klein. I'm from 15703 Fruit Farm Road, St. Joseph, Minnesota.
Thank you. So first, let's start with, do you have any follow-up or input to the staff report? You want to add anything or anything to the staff report?
No, I think everything she listed is correct.
Okay. And then probably most logical, can you answer Commissioner Percy's question on your future plans?
Well, first, maybe I can answer that dark line on there. The reason that was split...
And this would be Tracy.
Actually, it's Sherri.
Sherri, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. The... One of the owners did a mortgage split, and that's all it was. It wasn't surveyed to split, but he did it so that the home was on a separate parcel at that time. So it's just a piece of paper for his mortgage at the time. So if something defaulted on his mortgage... Because we questioned it when we initially looked into this property, too. So it's not split any other way. It was just a mortgage split. So that's why that black line's in there, it was from back. And then I think you were asking whether it should be split the opposite way. The township... We did question that. The township referred, we did it this way, so there's access... There'll be a separate driveway access for this parcel, as well as the other one that has access there, if you were out there.
Correct, and that's...
Commissioner Persky?
And that's why I was asking about, you know, potentially if that goes into two 10-acre parcels, then, you know, then you would have the access. But as that would be, if it was split in the center, then you would not have access. The backside lot would be inaccessible. So I know, I'm not in opposition. I'm just, I want to prevent issues, you know, down the road. So, thank you.
Why don't we open up the public hearing? Is there anyone here or online that would want to share something on this application? We received no letters or emails or anything, Heidi?
Correct.
Okay. So is there anyone here or online that wants to share something? If not, motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, Second.
Thank you, Jason. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor closing the public hearing, say aye. I guess we have to do a roll. Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and the public hearing is closed. So further discussion on the application? Any other questions or points? Seeing none, we'll do the findings of fact. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is. So it is an A40. However, the ag portion of this lot is... The Jason Wienerman, sorry. The ag portion of the lot is a smaller section to the southern part of the lot. So only half of the lot's actually... About a quarter of the lot's actually ag. And the neighboring parcels are also appear to be 10-acre parcels. So while it is an A40, this particular section seems to be moving towards that residential 1 subdivision or parcel standard.
Thank you, Jason. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, it does conform to the future land use map and the agricultural rural area and natural resources overlay. It does comply with our comprehensive plan when you look at our living goals, specifically looking at accessory dwelling unit policies and a mix of housing. We're also looking at a transitional area there.
Thank you, Sean. Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Richard Blankish, it is very much compatible when you look at, there's 21 other homes close by. So it fits.
Thank you, Rich. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated its standards and criteria stated and the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe the applicant's only proposing to build a single one-family parcel on this lot, so that would satisfy the R10 ordinance standards.
Thank you, Jason. Number five, other issues pertinent to this matter. Township input. They did recommend approval. Federal, state, local permits. I don't believe there are any. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection areas. That's not relevant at this point. Information submitted regarding the impact property values in the area because of the proposal, we receive none. I'm just going to answer these, and if I'm wrong, then I'm sure somebody's going to be more than happy to point that out. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. If I remember, that's a dirt road leading to the property, right?
It's a tar, yep. The way I went.
Okay.
You maybe went the back way, though. Public service and facilities, including schools, parks, streets, and utilities? No impact. Financial assurance required? Not applicable? Other issues? If not, motion would be in order to recommend or deny approval to the County Board. County Board meeting is July 27th. Is that correct, Heidi? Yes. So a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Richard Blankish, I make a motion that we approve this request.
Okay. Motion's been made.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion or the recommendation? Deb was doing a hand sign there, and I was going to make sure, now you know what she was saying. A motion was made, seconded, to recommend approval to the County Board for the July 27th meeting. All those in favor, I'm going to do the roll call. Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, recommendation to the County Board, unanimous. Good luck. The second item is to consider an interim use permit application submitted by Heather and Mike Madison, North Mankato. Heidi is going to do the staff report?
To consider...
By the way, number two in our packet, it was listed as number three, but I think we all figured it out, it's number two, so...
To consider an interim use permit application submitted by Heather and Mike Madison, North Mankato, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to operate a vacation private home rental in the residential 1 zoning district. The proposal is located in lots 1, 2, and 3 Block 4 of Clearwater Harbor, lying east of County Road 144 and west of Grass Lake. In Section 32, Linden Township, property address is 14232 County Road 144, South Haven. So the vacation home rental request, the applicants are requesting this to be valid for 10 years. Property is owned residential 1 with access from County Road 144. There's no structural changes proposed to the dwelling. Feedlot setbacks are met. There won't be any wetland impact. This is within the Shoreline Overlay District of Grass Lake, which is a natural environment lake. Surrounding area is zone residential 1 and residential 5. Wright County is 300 feet to the south. There is a feedlot approximately 800 feet to the northwest of the property. There are over 75 residential dwellings within Stearns County, and one animal feedlot within a half-mile of the property. The applicants did submit a water test for nitrates and coliform bacteria. The property is hooked up to the Clearwater Harbor septic system, which is a community septic system. This is a three-bedroom home. The occupancy for the home will be limited to the sewage system capacity. That capacity will limit them to six people in this rental. This will require a lodging license if the interim use permit is approved. The future land use map shows this as a concentrated development area. Proposed conditions are, one, set a date or event that the IUP would expire. The request is for 10 years, so December 31st of 2031. The maximum occupancy of the vacation home rental shall be six persons due to the size of the sewage treatment system. The applicant shall obtain a lodging license from Environmental Services prior to renting the home. The licensee shall keep a report detailing use of the home by recording at a minimum the name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of all guests using the property. Copy of the report shall be provided to the department upon request. And number five, a ring buoy attached to a 3/16 inch manila rope or equivalent material not over 60 feet in length is required near the shore as life-saving equipment. And that's it for the staff report.
Okay. We'll do the site visits. If you visited the site, please say yes. Jason Wienerman?
Yes, but for the last meeting.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes, from the last time.
Commissioner Persky?
Also, from the last time, yes.
And the Chair, I've visited the site this time. And then Sarah, is it Cavelli from Licensing visited? And did you visit it?
Yes, I was out there today.
Okay. And Sarah did it on April 29th of 2021. The applicants are with us via WebEx?
Correct, yep.
Why don't we go straight to that? Do you want to recognize yourselves for the record? Name and address, please?
I'm Madison. Permanent address, 2294 Balsam Drive in North Mankato.
I assume somebody can do something. Excuse me, before we lose our hearing, somebody can turn that down a little bit, I would assume. Hang on one second. I've got the first part of the address. You want to give the city again, please?
North Mankato.
Got it. That's better, yep, thank you. Is there anything you want to add to the staff report?
I agree with all of the recommendations that the staff made, willing to comply with everything that was recommended. I do also want to wish... Tell you that I wish I would have been there. We just had an unexpected situation, and I had to be out of town. So sorry, I was not there in person. I do have some other comments. I'm not sure if you want me to do that now or when you do the public hearing.
Now would be fine.
All right. My husband, Mike, and I bought the house in South Haven, just as a lake home. We have three kids. Cora is 15, Briar is 14, Reed is 10. So when we purchased the house, we were using it for family and friends, but we're looking to do the short-term rental to get the interim use permit to be able to help supplement use or the payments for the house. It is located right next door to the Maple Hill Resort. It also has the nice channel on the other side, so it is separated from any permanent residents who live in the area. Currently, we are looking at using the VRBO platform. The reason I choose this platform is because they do allow us to do a lot of screening every person that comes in. It is more of a high-end rental. I am asking for a higher price point for people to use. So I am looking for those groups that are coming in with families for relaxing weekend, bonding weekends. I definitely don't want anybody who's going to damage my house or have late parties or, you know, anything like that. I want people in the house that would treat it like I do. So VRBO does allow me to see recommendations they've gotten from previous renters, rental hosts, and I can actually choose to accept or deny based on those previous renters' experiences. I sent out rental agreements to everyone, so you can see what that looks like. Every renter who comes into the house does need to sign that, so they won't even get access to the house unless they sign that, which does list the quiet hours of 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. It also states a lot of the septic rules that I have researched about to make sure that that is compatible with the watershed. I have also shared the rental contract with HOA President for his comment and to see if they had any other recommendations or suggestions for me to help them, and they did not have anything else to share with me. I am in the process of hiring a rental manager who is from the area. Mankato's about an hour and 45 minutes away, but I wanted to make sure that I do have somebody local for emergencies, and I will be able to share that information with everybody, the county and HOA President. So if they do have anything they want to address, I have somebody immediately to be able to handle that situation. I have also installed cameras. I have a Gorbito camera and a camera on the back of the house, so I am able to see every person going in and out, and also the activities that are happening in the backyard, so I can keep an eye on the lake and everything that's happening on my property. I guess if you, the planning commission, or anybody have suggestions or other conditions that you would like to see happen, I'm definitely open to anything that people are willing to suggest, because I'm definitely, you know, looking to help supplement the payment so we can, you know, make this our beautiful lake house. And just a reminder that it will not be rented full-time. We are planning on using it as much as we possibly can and just looking to have that supplemental income, to be able to rent it, you know, when we are not able to be there. That is all I have, if you have any other questions.
Okay. Why don't we open the public hearing and start that process, and then maybe ask the questions after that, if you don't mind? So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to share something about this item? Please do something. Raise your hand or come up to the podium. Okay? Is there anyone joining us via WebEx that would like to share something with us on this application? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Actually, Sean, we have to enter the letters and the petitions and everything.
Sorry.
But that's okay. So there's no one here, there's no one online. Now, why don't we do the correspondence, the emails, and the petitions, and everything? Heidi?
Yep. Mr. Chair, we did get a few letters from the June meeting, which were all included in your packets. And then an email from the Property Owners Association was sent to you earlier this week, and you have a copy of that provided tonight. And then I also got one more letter that I'll read right now. Dear Heidi, we are owners and neighbors to the subject property. We have concerns for our shared sewer system with the subject property. We have viewed the subject property, and due to its size, are concerned that renters can load up occupants, which would be beyond the allowed amount, and therefore put a burden on our sewer system. Please count this notification as a no vote for the owner's request. Respectfully, Steve and Kathy Schmied, 475 Beachwood Road, South Haven.
I was at the June meeting, so the June letters and everything were entered into the record in June?
Yep, and they're all part of your packet.
And they don't need to be re-entered?
Correct.
Any other way but that? And then what about the petition?
That... Let's see here. I can read that if you want.
Why don't you highlight that and then the number of names?
Okay. So this was a petition that we received from the Property Owners Association, signed by quite a few people in that area. They are opposed to the request. Main concerns regarding the sewer system and damage to the sewer system from people using it more frequently. Also concerned that there will be... Concerned with the use of the lake and enjoyment of the lake from the guests that go there. And concerned with the occupancy and keeping that to six people, and how will that be monitored and controlled? That's kind of the highlights. There's probably 50 or more names signed on that from the area.
Got it. And again, we received it, it's entered into the record, so we're obviously all aware of it. I guess we'll open it up now for the Planning Commission discussions. One thing that I guess I would ask Ms. Madison is, obviously, I assume you've seen staff share the petition with you and everything, so... And you're aware of the well issue and water usage issue, so what's your... Were you aware of that when you, one, bought the property? and two, when you thought about doing the rental? Ms. Madison?
When I, when I purchased the property, it was listed as a city sewer. So honestly, I was not aware of the shared septic system until right before the last meeting in June. So I have been working with the watershed and learning more about it. I do understand the concerns that HOA has, but I feel like the six people rental that I will have there will actually be less people than when I'm there with my family. And I feel like I can share the information about what is approved to be put down, the system, and what is not in multiple areas around the house with flyers and letters and stuff like that to help make sure that it is used properly. I do put in my rental agreement that, you know, that it is a septic and the rules of the septic, and I do state that they will be charged a fee if it is used improperly. And I do have them initial and sign that contract, so hopefully just having that information, they will be very careful when they are in the house, just like I would be, being new to a septic system.
Okay, members?
Yeah, and I will keep a record of everybody who is staying in the house, so you will know that there is only six people, as per your recommendations.
Thank you. Members?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, a question for Heidi. So the permit they're requesting is for a vacation and a private home rental. The property is listed as Madison Properties LLC. Is there any conflict between a limited liability corporation running a vacation home and a private individual running one? We have a business now running a rental home.
That I would not have the answer to. That I'm not sure.
And then another question for Heidi and maybe for the applicant, Jason Wienerman again. The, we haven't gotten anything from the HOA formally, correct?
That petition was from the Property Owners Association. So that was prepared by them and submitted.
Was that formally on behalf of the property owners or was that just a group of the property owners?
They call, it was the Property Owners Association, which I think is the HOA.
Okay. Thank you. I believe the chairman or the president?
He sent the email with that, yep.
Correct. Yep.
Mr. Chair?
And that's a question, maybe we can find out for the future, the legal entity, I'm guessing, you know, it's a home rental, but, you know, they, obviously for their purposes, they did the LLC, but that's a good question to find out for future rentals. Commissioner Persky?
Thank you. In regards to the agreement with the septic, we have these names on the petition. To what extent is that public septic shared? Are all these people members of that, or is it shared just like the number of homes that are on that peninsula? Is it shared by all the homes on the entire lake? Do we, do we have any idea what the extent of that septic is?
I know there, it's quite a large system. It serves a large number of homes. I don't know the exact number of homes off the top of my head.
And I thought I read something, Heidi and Commissioner Persky, that it goes beyond the HOA. I'm looking back through the information.
Is it, is it? Yeah. It serves, so it serves this area here and then also the Hidden River Development to the north.
Right. So it is beyond the HOA.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman again. So is there a formal HOA around this lake? Is there a formal homeowners association? I mean, the question to ask is if the HOA has bylaws? I didn't see anything in the tenant agreement indicating that occupants are expected to follow the bylaws. So it, it probably wouldn't be a county issue if they're violating bylaws, it would be an HOA issue, but that might be something the applicant needs to consider in the rental agreement to ensure that renters are understanding and following bylaws if they are there.
Right. I know Hidden River has a formal association. I'm not sure about the rest of this area. But yeah, if there was that.
If I can.
Just hang tight. Mr. Westrom, the president of the HOA Clearwater Harbor Property Owners Association, in the letter, email that he sent on July 12th says there's forty-nine members. So I guess I would, that's as formal as you're going to get. One, he's the president. Two, it's an association. Three, they are saying they got forty-nine members. So that looks like a formalized HOA domain. And then the sewer system is, the way, from what I've read, is run by the watershed district. So you've got the HOA, you've got the watershed district, the county likes to approve things and then not touch them after, or I shouldn't say the county, some people in county, which I disagree with, but in this case, we can't bank on the county doing anything. We approve this, nobody's going to do anything on, from my perspective, from the county, which could create problems. It's a most unique one that we've had so far with a shared system, and the concerns are legitimate, the freedom is legitimate to be able to do a rental home, but on same token, this is a kind of a awkward situation for everybody.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman here. My thought is, there could be, a family could, this is a nice house, a family could have bought it with two, three, four kids and be living there full-time, doing laundry, taking showers every day and this and that, and they would probably use the limit of this amount of water where you have people coming in for home rental. Most of the time, the people bring their clothes along and they take, unless they're going to wash everything there, they take their laundry along back home. So you're probably not going to use the amount of water that they're allowed to use here. And I went through this here, and I've been on the board since 2014, and we've approved twenty-three home rentals. Every time we go into a new area, we get the same thing where we get all, when we went into Clearwater Lake, which was about six years ago, five years ago, because that one is ending, we had a lot of people. When we went to Horseshoe Lake, we had a lot of people against it. When we went to Watap Lake, we had a lot of people against it. And so far, what have we heard? We've had one, as far as I know, one person, one complaint in all of the years against it, and we don't know if that one was substantiated. So they've been working out, it's, yes, we've got this water issue. I guess that's something we'd have to monitor. We put a water, there's a water monitor on every one we've approved so far on the amount going out. So here, it's just kind of pre-put in for us that we're going to monitor the water, and if it doesn't work out, I guess, could we put something in if this doesn't work? Otherwise, the people saying this is our lake, we get to use, well, we've argued that point for every year because the lake is owned by the state. So everybody has the right to use the lake as, and like she said, and we've had this before, these people, nice houses, they charge big rent and they have damaged deposits and everything that, you don't get a bunch of kids coming there for three days that are going to wreck the place. These are people that have been in the neighborhood or families that just want to rent the place and can't afford to buy a place like this, and they rent it for three days or a week or whatever, and they're, they're happy. So I guess that's all I have to say about the situation.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, just again to build on with Ken's comment. Under the proposed conditions, condition number three indicates a maximum occupancy of six people, which I think is very respectful of the sewer system. And I think the applicant themselves, if I remember properly, they said they might have ten people or more when they come up as an individual family. So we might actually be seeing less people on the system than we would without this property usage. So I think with the conditions, I believe we would be respectful of the limitations of the sewer system.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Rich?
Yeah.
Rich Blankish?
This is Rich Blankish. Question for the applicant. Even though you have a limitation of six people staying in the home, what stops that person that is renting from having guests over for the day if they want to have, let's say a little bit of a family barbecue, excuse me? So my question is, are you going to have limitation on your guests, having a limit of guests? Because that would impact that sewer system.
Ms. Madison?
Yes, absolutely. Like I said, we do have the ability to screen guests before they come in. People looking, I always ask who is staying in the house, who is coming to the house. So I can reiterate that I only have an allowance of six people to be in that house as a rental. Also, the doorbell camera will help me and backyard camera will help me a lot, you know, to be able to call on my local manager if they are not responding or abiding by those rules. But I do, I do have that ability to try and stop the ones who say, our friends live in town and we're coming to visit because you're close. I can deny those requests because I already know that that's probably going to be the place they're going to gather because it's a larger location. So using that ability to communicate with those renters before I approve will be how I stop that from happening.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, Joe Persky.
Commissioner Persky?
I don't know if there would be a way in which we could even on the rules discourage that, just saying large day gatherings of family and friends are prohibitive, a prohibitive use of the property.
I think the number, Jeff Bertram, the number would kind of take care of that. I'm thinking, one thing I'm thinking of, you know, now I'll say it out loud, is do we grant it, if we do grant it, do we grant it for ten years or do we grant it for five years on a trial basis? Because it is a little unique, just in case it doesn't work. And then things could kind of be regrouped in five years. It's just a thought. Should we think about doing that to kind of do some monitoring and if it works, great? And if they work with the sewer district and the HOA and they can make this work, great? And if they can't, well, then that's the time to kind of have a reckoning. But just a thought. Any other discussion? Otherwise, if there's no one with us from on the Web, WebEx or in person, then it would be in order to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Chair, Richard Blankish will second that.
Thanks, Rich. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? If not, you're in favor, say aye. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, public hearing is closed. Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner?
Commissioner Persky?
Your suggestion of making the switch to five years from ten years, with that suggestion, I would have no problem supporting this to the board.
Well, when we get to the findings, then if that's, if members are so inclined, we'll do it at that, that point, or should we do it now?
Is that something we, we have to vote on?
Yeah, I think we should. So is that something somebody wants to entertain at this point, before we do the findings?
Yeah, let's do that.
Pardon me?
Let's just do that, so it'll be in.
Okay. Sean Blackburn moves that we reduce the time period to five years. Somebody do the math, that'd be twenty-six? Yep, December twenty-six. Sean Blackburn moves that. Is there a second?
This is Richard Blankish will second that.
There's a second. Any further discussion on decreasing the amount of time to five years? If not, when I call your name, if you're in favor of that, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Nay.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Nay.
Mike Perrell?
Nay.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's tied, I think. There's three to.
Mr. Chair, I think we can probably just go through the findings and then the, whatever motion is made can be made for five or ten years if, yeah, it's a failure of that motion.
Right. But at this point, it's ten years, and so now it'll be approved or denied based on that probably, so, yep, okay. Let's do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
The proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance, sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6B of the land use and zoning ordinance, 439. Vacation rental property is in allowed use.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I believe it does. It's aligned with the business goals. Number, the business pillar, business goals. Number three, acknowledging tourism's economic value and the prospective contribution of this industry to both the diversity of the county's economic base and the potential for growth.
Three, is the proposal compatible with existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is. It lies directly adjacent to another recreational site. This is a seasonally-used lake, so there's a variety of other land uses and others, owners who own property for a similar purpose, if only they're independent use. So I believe we're not going to see any significant change in use from surrounding uses.
Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn. I'd have to say this applicant has demonstrated much more forethought in planning and to be able to, her ideas on how to manage and monitor have shown that she should be able to satisfy the ordinance.
Five, when I say the issue, then please share your thoughts. Township input? I don't remember seeing anything.
We did not receive anything from the township on this.
So no township input?
Mr. Chair, just, I believe it's like a local government input, so we did get a letter from the watershed district expressing concern. So this is reflecting more local government input. We might want to highlight their concern in there.
I was going to put that in the other category probably, because it says township or city on this one. So federal, state, local permits, they're not applicable. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection, certainly this would be the sewer concern. If there's anything else, somebody say something. Information submitted regarding impact property values, we received nothing. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts?
Minimum.
Minimum? There will be some, but minimum. Public service facilities, schools, parks, streets, utilities, utilities again would be the sewer. Financial assurance required, reclamation of cleanup, not applicable. And then in the other category, Jason's point, the watershed district input stating, I guess, the fact that it's a shared septic system and that the Clearwater Harbor Property Owners Association have. and that the Clearwater Harbor Property Owners Association have expressed their opposition. So with that, motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I recommend, I move that we recommend the approval of this agenda item to make a recommendation for approval to the full board with the five conditions as documented in the staff report.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, I'll second that.
Second by Ken Mossman, is there any discussion on that motion recommending approval? If not, when I state your name, say yes. If you're for that motion, say no. If you're opposed, Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
No.
And the chair votes no. So four to two, it's recommended approval to the county board. Next issue, number three. After the fact request, major shoreline operations submitted by Andrew Carlson and Aaron Bell of Seagull. Nick Newman's going to give the staff report on this one.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission.
On this item. This, a little bit of feedback, okay. Uh, yes, this item was continued. This item was continued from October of last year. This is for the retaining walls on a slope. We okay with that feedback? With that feedback, or?
Well, if we can't do anything about it, we'll have to live with it. They'll figure it out.
Hello, folks, Andrew Carlson and my wife, Erin, up here. Thanks for taking the time to see us tonight.
Hang on a second, Mr. Carlson, we're not that far yet. But thank you for letting us know.
Okay.
We're going to go back to the staff report.
Figured out the feedback issue. Okay, so this, yes, this is continued from October of last year for retaining walls over four feet in height and greater than 25% of the lot width, which makes it an after the fact major application. The item was continued for the applicants to provide vegetation and stormwater kind of control plan for the site. Since then, so during the original application, we had evaluated how there was no erosion control present or sediment control present on the site. There was sod that was placed in some of the disturbed areas on the slope. Since then, there has been areas of bare soil with erosion and no sediment control or silt fence was ever on the site. The applicant did indicate here within the last day that there was silt fence that was partially constructed on the site. Septic system is considered compliant, yet. Horseshoe Lake is a, listed by the MPCAs as impaired water due to nutrient levels. So that sediment entering the water does carry phosphorus, which is a nutrient that contributes to algae blooms and other things. The property history shows the site visits from, from staff. So we've been out there again, I was out there July 1st with those recent pictures that are in your, in your packets. The retaining wall heights and lengths are shown in the sketch. The red lines with the dimensions are the, are the actual dimensions of the wall. I know at the last meeting, there was some question on the height, but those, those are the updated heights for the walls as constructed. There is a small wall, about 1.7 feet high, proposed as part of the new plan to control the stormwater on the site. That plan includes a, so for the vegetation, includes a non-native, high maintenance turf seed mixture that's proposed around the rock trench and rain garden areas to control the stormwater flow. So it's not a native plant mixture that was proposed. And one of the conditions, if, if recommended for approval, we would recommend that it would be a native plant mixture that would be used. So as I stated.
Hang on, let Nick finish, please.
So as I stated.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. Commissioner Persky?
Can you, could you show us where that wall is on the diagram?
The one that's proposed?
The one down near the shoreline?
So there is an existing wall about one foot tall, near the shoreline, that has been there for quite a while. Some of the vegetation was trimmed since the last site visit, so that's more visible now than it was previously. But that has been there for quite a while in, in that place.
Did you mention that was there going to be an additional wall then? Or was this referencing the existing wall?
Yep, so the additional wall, if you look on the site plan that was submitted on June 3rd by the applicants, this includes the proposed rock trench adjacent to the garage closer to the eastway road. That rock trench is proposed at 1.5 feet deep with 110 cubic feet of volume. That's designed to handle the water flow off the road and the impervious kind of area along the road and driveway area. All, all of that is currently bare soil up there, if you made a site visit. And you can see that in some of the pictures in front of the garage. That rock trench would handle the water from, from there. And then as you go closer to the lake, adjacent to the garage is where that proposed modular block wall is, is proposed. Kind of down slope of that rock trench. And then the other stormwater practice here would be the rain garden closer to the, closer to the water body. And then you can note the, in the detail, it has the proposed vegetation. I did include that information for what that vegetation mixture is. Like I stated, it's a high maintenance, non-native turf mixture that would be mowed regularly and is not drought tolerant. There are some areas of bare soil on the site, like I, like I said. Those haven't been stabilized with erosion control blanket, as we indicated was required, both at the last meeting and in previous correspondence with the applicant. There are a couple of conditions that we would recommend if, if approved. One of those is that the native vegetation mix, as specified by the department, would be used for the areas around the stormwater control practices in place of the non-native plant mix that was proposed. And then construction of the rock trench and rain garden, full stabilization of the site and final planting should occur by September 30th of this year. And then if, if wholly or partly denied in this request, if, if it's partly denied for any of the walls, we would request that, that removal would take place by September 30th as well. We did receive one comment from the Stock River Watershed District stating that an erosion control permit is required for, for this site, for this project yet. No other written correspondence for it. And then we can ask who visited the, the site.
Actually, I'll do that, but thank you. So my members, if you've visited the site, say yes when I call your name, Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And I did too, so let's take care of that. Nick visited at least once, I think several times, and Greg Berg was there. The way I understand this, by the way, on page two, it says October 15th, 2021, planning commission continued. It's supposed to be 2020, just for the record, is that's when we continued it. And based, it started in August of 2020 is when this all started, correct?
That is correct.
And somebody's going to have to answer at some point why the soil was exposed from August of last year, you know, almost a full year with no sediment control or until evidently yesterday or today. So we've been dealing with this for a year. Somebody's got to answer that, I guess, for me. At this point, we'll go to the applicants. If you want to announce the time, Mr. Carlson, state your name and whoever else is with you. Name, address for the record, please.
Oh, sure, I'm Andrew Carlson. I live at 8157 Paget Avenue Northeast, in not Seagull. I have my wife here, Erin, she resides at the same residence.
And if she could just say her name for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Erin Bell Carlson.
Thank you. Okay, do you want to add anything to the staff report that you just heard?
Uh, I, I do. You had asked for somebody to answer to why the, there's been the exposure since August and you know, the, the way it looks in August is far from the way it looks now. We, we, we put as much sod down as we could until October and you know, I left that meeting feeling like I wasn't supposed to be doing anything more with the property. So I, I didn't and I didn't know what you all had in, in store. The way it looks right now is the way it looked last fall. So I mean, we, we had sod down and then we had the, the meeting and, and we, we stopped doing anything. So we haven't done anything other than make efforts to implement the recommendations from the site plan, the, the water runoff site plan from the engineer. We started moving rock over into the area where they suggested that we had that rock bench. And that's, that's the extent of what we've done. But I would like to say too, you know, we've, we're prepared to do what the conditions ask for. You know, the, the recommend, we went out and we got the two engineer statements. The walls were sort of in question as to whether or not it was the appropriate structure. And I went out and hired a specialist and he determined that it is. He recognized that there, there was some runoff at one point, but nothing that sod couldn't take care of. And he recognized that it had been addressed as well. The recommendations that he had was that the, the walls remain as they are, that they are the appropriate, they're, they're a reasonable and appropriate structure for the use of the property. And then he recommended that we, we, we go ahead with a, a site plan. So the site plan was consistent with his recommendations. And again, we, we're, we're prepared to continue to take measures to, to adopt and implement those recommendations, the same as the recommendations on the proposed finding of fact.
Who did the site?
Are there any questions?
Yeah, who did the site plan, Mr. Carlson?
ALD.
Okay.
They're all.
And do you have a licensed contractor?
For what?
For the additional work or tightening this up, finishing it up?
I, I haven't hired anybody yet. I, I mean, you, you look at these trenches and I, I don't feel like I need to, I, I can do it myself. Do I?
Okay. So members, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Persky?
Yes, Mr. Carlson, last time we met, you had mentioned that you had talked to Nick about the project and, and said that you had assumed that you were okay with moving forward with the project. In that discussion, I believe it was, did you talk about one, one wall? And, and I believe that it was at four, four feet was the discussion you maybe had with Nick. But then we ended up having, actually coming out with, and we didn't give an approval. You folks had just had that discussion. And then you went ahead and actually put in three walls and one of the walls actually exceeds four feet, it's four feet, 10 inches. I'm a little bit troubled by that. Do you have an explanation for that?
Mr. Carlson?
So if I understand you correctly, what you're concerned about is, I apparently had a conversation and I think that's not accurate. If you're referring to my, my father-in-law, when we first started construction on this or just, yeah, and we were starting construction on this, we had envisioned one wall. And my father-in-law talked with Nick and it was his understanding that so long as we didn't go over four feet, and I recognize that we had. And it wasn't seen by the water or from the lake, you couldn't see it from the lake, then we were good. Admittedly, this project got out of control and beyond the scope of that conversation. So I, that's my explanation. I, I don't know what to say. You know, we got into this and we did what we thought we were supposed to be doing as far as taking care of the property.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Persky?
Yes, Mr. Carlson, and see, that's, that's my concern. My concern is that you, you had the understanding that you were going to go ahead with one wall and then you ended up doing three walls. And also you had the understanding that the wall was not to be exposed on the outside of the property so that it was visible from the lake. And, and yet you went ahead and did that. Also, prior to that, I understand the, the hillside was not failing so that the necessity of the walls were not necessarily there. And comparing it to the other adjacent properties, they don't have that. And just moving forward with this, considering we're going to allow you to have three walls there, what does that allow the neighbors to think, you know, the parameters for them to, to do what they want to do? If they were to come to us? I, I just have, I have a great difficulty with that.
I, I feel like that's a concern. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just recognizing you for the record.
I see, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. This isn't after the fact application. I recognize that you all would absolutely prefer for me to have put this plan together long before I did. And for that, I apologize. I, I don't know what to say. I feel like we're going down a slippery slope out of concern that this is somehow going to result in mass, you know, people, you know, doing this. And for what it's worth, this is a very consistent sort of application of erosion control that I see throughout the lake. I mean, all, the entire chain of lakes. So, I mean, I, I think that my neighbors, I don't have to go very far to see, you know, a project like this. I don't know how to speak to your concern as to, you know, what's going to be the, the big social result of this. I, again, I, I apologize for not providing the application beforehand. But we are where we're at right now and this is consistent with the, all the zoning regulations. You know, we've addressed your concerns that were stated back in October. And again, I'm prepared to go ahead and, and follow through on the conditions that have been recommended.
I'm glad that, Nick, you specified that the brush was cleared off in that bottom wall because I thought I was dreaming or forgot what it looked like in October. I don't remember a wall being there, but obviously I think you explained that you couldn't see it. Or at least you couldn't see it like you can see it now. So you explained that part. Any other questions from commission members? We'll ponder that, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the room? Yes, there's one. And then, of course, if somebody's on WebEx, get ready. But go ahead, ma'am, step up to the podium. Just state your name and address for the record, please. Very good.
Mr. Chair, my name is Mary Schrobelgen. I reside at 20939 Eastway Road, next to these people. My concern, I called the week of Memorial Day in regards to what was going on because we are in Florida over the winter. We live up here during the summer. When we came back, we saw two-by-sixes braced up to the garage. There wasn't any problem with the garage before the walls were put in. I think the integrity from taking down the trees and other shrubberies has made, made the garage unstable. At least that's what it looks like to us because it's being braced up. When I called, I was told that an engineered report was to be had on the property, which made me feel wonderful because on the Sunset Bay Peninsula, where we are at, there was a landslide in the early 70s. And about 10 years ago, there was a landslide that involved four homes. And I'm really nervous about my property. The walls don't bother me, but. the walls don't bother me, but if you look at the property, if the garage comes down, it's going to take out the propane tank, which is, I don't know, 100, 200 gallons. I don't know how big that is, but that's my cabin right down there. In, yeah, it, it makes me very nervous. And I know that they've been trying to do things, but I, I really think the garage issue has got to also be looked at because it was caused by the building of the walls. And if you look at the one picture, you can see the braces that they put up sometime after October when we left the other side of the garage. Oh, I saw it up there earlier.
Right.
And that wall that is down by the lake has been there as long as I can remember, which is close to 20 years.
Okay.
Um, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do you want to share anything, Mr. Carlson?
I do. I the letter that she wrote a year ago was out of concern for what the property, what her property was going to look like come spring. She was convinced that everything that was, you know, up behind the retaining walls was going to end up in her yard. Um, I can assure you that that concern, um, was unsubstantiated and the property was very good this spring. Um, there was a need contrary to what she's claiming. There was an absolute need for this wall. This is our second season with this. So this is the second spring. And I can assure you that first spring that we had was filled with good times of basically bailing out the front porch because it was just coming in with just tons of water along with all the dirt that had come in because of erosion right into the, into the patio. The wall, I will tell you embarrassingly, I, I, that's because I dropped our pontoon bullet, um, back on that wall when I was storing it for the winter. That has nothing to do with erosion. That's my complete boneheaded move. Um, not to mention that, you know, the, the wall wasn't secured to the concrete as it was supposed to have been when it was, was constructed. So, um, that was separating because, you know, the, the hill had been sliding. I agree that it needed something because that's partly why we did this is to save the garage from sliding. This is a, a huge endeavor and I assure everyone that this is a structurally sound, um, structure and it's consistent with what the experts have concluded. Um, so the concern about the, the garage falling out because of poor construction, again, another unsubstantiated concern, I ask that you just, um, take that into consideration.
Okay. Uh, anybody else on WebEx or in the room that wants to share something on this one? Anybody else? Okay, motion's in order? No correspondence, right, Nick?
That is correct, apart from the comments from the Sauk River Watershed District.
Right. Um, so motion would be in order to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Sean Burke, uh, Blackburn, Sean Bertram. We got a new member on the board. Sean Blackburn, uh, moves to close the public hearing? Mike Perrell's going to second it. You didn't hear that. He whispered it to me. Uh, any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, when I say your name, if you're in favor of closing the public hearing, say yes. If you're not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, public hearing is closed. Any further discussion on the application?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. On the October 21st letter, um, notifying the applicant to continue, um, it states decision to table this discussion to a later date. And we are now eight months after the fact. Um, was that an oversight on our part to leave this hanging out there for a while? Or is this something we need to consider in the future to continue to a specific date so we wrap these things up in a timely fashion?
Nick?
Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, um, there has been, there was correspondence, um, I think on two different occasions since then with the applicant. Um, we did hear from the engineer, I believe it was January or February with a phone call stating that there was something being done. So, uh, part of the delay may have been just the backlog and getting an engineer to, to work on it. That's just kind of a reality of construction and, um, engineers and, you know, professionals in, in the construction industry as of late. So that I think played a role in this, um, at, at least a partial role. So it was on our, on our radar and this was set to come to the planning commission regardless of, of applicant, some, you know, submittal of additional items, um, at this meeting. So it, it was on our agenda the, the whole time.
Any other issues by commission? Mr. Chair? Uh, Mr. Perrell?
Uh, my only, uh, concern is I still have the concern as long as this has been open almost like you say, a year. And, uh, he didn't even make the attempt to put up a silt fence. And, and when somebody's trying to comply with a, with a problem on a project, the first thing you do is put up a silt fence. That's my big concern is, you know, why hadn't it been done if he's trying to follow all the procedures?
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Chair?
Richard Blankish? Um, I went back to the document, uh, October of 2020. And in that document, I tallied up the, uh, wall lengths, 120 feet. Now I look at this document that we just received and it's got the red line markings or the dimensions laid out. It's 141 feet. Where did the ex, the extra walls go or come from?
Nick?
Mr. Chair, member Blankish? Yep. So the way the walls were measured was a little bit differently here. So where the wall is curved, wall length is usually measured in relation to the ordinary high water level. So the shoreline along the length, so lateral length. The way the, the walls were measured, um, previously was took into account the curve. Some of the measurements here were more, um, either perpendicular or parallel to the shore. So that's where some of the difference is. And then the other difference here, um, is there is a little bit more wall proposed with that modular block wall downslope of where that rock trench is proposed. So that also changes the wall length.
But the end result is there's more wall?
Correct. There is additional wall proposed here.
Got it. So let's, uh, let's not continue it because the wall is going to keep getting longer is, is the message I'm hearing here. Um, maybe we should come up with a standard measuring. I don't know what everyone's expectation is, but I would think wall length is you follow the curve. So I wouldn't go a straight line if it curves way back or in personally, but what do I know? Any other thing from the commission? Otherwise we'll do the findings?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Persky?
Um, I'm just curious as to the direction the, uh, uh, commission wants to take on this. Uh, I just, I just have a, a great difficult of approving this with minor approvals or minor changes because, uh, you know, we would not allow what was taken, what's taken place to happen. Uh, three walls, uh, when we probably wouldn't have done that, we probably wouldn't have allowed the extension beyond the, the cabin. Uh, you know, he knew the wall was supposed to be four foot and he went and made a 10, four foot, 10 inch wall. Uh, I, I have trouble, you know, making minor changes on this and think, and calling it good. I believe there was also some trees on the property, uh, prior to the, uh, construction of the walls that have been removed. And those were holding that, uh, hillside in place as well. So I, I'm just curious, uh, as is, I'm having a great difficulty if we just move this forward.
And ultimately, obviously, Commissioner, uh, the board, we're recommending body, the board approves or denies it. So that's obviously huge input, you know, coming from one board members. So let's do the findings and see where, where it goes.
Is it ready for us to provide any additional input?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, right now the public hearing is closed unless somebody's got a specific question. Uh, we're pretty much moving into the findings at this point.
Well, I feel like I'm going to address the concerns.
Um, well, then let me do this then, Mr. Carlson, because you seem to have a lot of answers during meetings, but we don't see them on paper. So let me humor you. I'm going to ask you, what would you want to add to Commissioner Persky's comments then? So now you can respond.
Okay, thank you. The intent is to comply with what was asked in October. And we, you asked for a plan and we went out and hired two separate firms, you know, and got those technical knowledgeable people to provide recommendations. And we've, we're prepared to follow those recommendations. And, you know, the, the expert indicated that this wasn't appropriate, um, plan, you know, as it was laid out. Again, I recognize that we're behind the A-ball on this. And I'm not trying to be presumptuous, but, um, this is, these are good structures and I ask that we just not look back as to, you know, all the other potential options that we could have had and just recognize the fact that this has been deemed to be an appropriate use and compliant with, um, the land use zoning ordinance.
And everybody can, everybody can speak. Yeah, I think, I think we're done with that. No, thank you. Everybody can speak for themselves how, what, I don't know what everybody envisioned for a plan back in October, but normally a plan to me, what we've seen is you go get a landscaper and that this is where the mistake was made from the very beginning. Everything was circumvented. Things were being done without a, even a contractor or no licensed, you know, contractor. And it just was hodgepodge kind of into this. And staff either didn't engage or weren't asked to engage and it just kind of kept muddling through. And we're here today with the same thing. So again, we'll do the findings and see where, where it takes us. Um,
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jason, a quick question. So when I went back and looked at the October 20th meeting, we had asked for the additional, um, stormwater prevention plan and erosion control. At no time during that meeting did we approve the walls. So the additional stormwater plan was additional information to help us evaluate the overall after the fact application for the entire permit. So we made no indication how this commission is going to vote in terms of the after the fact application. So what we're doing now is we now have a more complete after the fact application with the stormwater plan. So we are evaluating the whole process as if it was more information provided at October meeting. Correct? Thank you.
Nick is nodding affirmative. So that would mean yes. Um, findings of fact, number one, can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality, improve aesthetics, control erosion, or enhance habitat? Please describe the reasons the applicant made the alteration and include documentation if available. And staff might have to help, Nick, for factual standpoints, please help state the facts at the right time. So let me read it again. Uh, can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality? One, improve aesthetics. Two, control erosion. Three, or enhance habitat?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Um, from what I remember from the October meeting based upon the minutes, um, and the discussion we've had here, um, the installation of the walls was for better personal use of the property. Um, and, um, as we've seen, the water quality and erosion control wasn't after the fact thought that wasn't conducted. So I would, I believe the reason for the applicant's installing the wall, um, was not to protect water quality, minimally to improve aesthetics, and neither to control erosion nor enhance habitat.
Number two, why did the applicant fail to obtain an alteration permit or comply with the requirements before commencing work?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn. Um, the applicant claims, um, a basic ignorance as to the need of the permits and applications.
And again, Nick, you can add some other factual, uh, information. March 12th, 2020, Wire Mental Services received a call from the property owner about constructing a deck. That's really how this all started. It had nothing to do with, are we doing the wall right? Can we get a permit for the wall? Um, the owner was informed the variance would be required for any deck or additions. And then that went until April 23rd. And then that's when they started talking about the retaining wall. So, um, why did the applicant fail to obtain the alteration permit? Partially didn't know from what he said. And also it had, it was a secondary thought. It was the deck that they were calling upon. Three, did the applicant obtain all the required permits, comply with other requirements? Please identify all other required permits and whether the applicant obtained the permits? Were any permits retained, Nick?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, no permits were obtained.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here for clarification. Have they obtained the Sauk River Watershed District permit yet?
Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, uh, not to my knowledge. Uh, John at the Watershed District did reach out to me a couple of weeks ago. As of that point, there was no permit obtained for that.
All right, thank you.
And, you know, for the record, we got a letter saying that they need to do that. So they haven't seen that. And then I would say, um, well, comply, comply with the requirements. This, uh, the sediment control, obviously for a year hasn't been complied with and now evidently it is. And I take him for his word that it's there. So, but for a year it hasn't been. Number four, is the alteration in a sensitive area, shore or bluff impact zone, wetland buffer, county biological survey site, or other documented high value habitat? Identify and describe all sensitive areas. Are any of these areas defined, Nick?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, it is on a steep slope that slopes directly to the water body, which would be a sensitive area.
Okay. Anybody have something to add to that? Five, is the alteration visible from the lake or public water? Describe the degree to which the alteration is visible.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman here. It's pretty much says it right down. It's partially visible when the leaves are on. I'm sure during the winter you'll probably see it more, but I walked all the way to the end of the dock and you can see the, where it sticks out past the cabin, but you cannot see what is behind the house at all. And I don't know, I couldn't, didn't go over to like the north side to see how much is visible. So it's exactly the way it says on our, it's partially visible.
Okay. Six, does the alteration affect the character of the neighborhood or will it result in substantial detriment or neighbor, neighboring properties? Describe all substantial changes, detriments.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn. It's kind of hard to say how the alteration is going to affect the neighborhood, especially since we're not finished with it and they're not finished with it. We don't know what we're looking at. Um, the detriment is the fact that it's been sitting there unfinished and ready to roll into the lake at any point if we get enough rain, um, because of the fact that the measures have not been taken. So we don't know what would happen or what could happen. It's all kind of up in the air, but, but there's obviously negligence. I'll just leave it at that.
And I would add that, uh, obviously, uh, Mary, uh, who gave And I would add that obviously Mary, who gave testimony to the neighbor, certainly has changed and potentially is causing her concern for the neighboring property, which is the cabin, which is downhill. Seven, did the alteration reduce or eliminate an existing buffer between the ordinary high water level water and the impervious surfaces or create more direct conduit for stormwater to flow into the public waters? This might be a staff technical question again.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, it is slightly unclear in terms of the vegetation that was there beforehand. So in terms of eliminating a buffer or vegetation for flow to the lake, that's, that's a little bit unclear. The walls, however, adjacent to the walls on the, would be the south side. There, there is still bare soil there where we can see that water does flow and it is not really controlled in any way at this point. So that did not address that concern in terms of a direct conduit of stormwater flow to the water body.
Eight, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories? Describe the change or damage for each category. Aesthetics of the shore is viewed from the public water.
Mr. Chair, Jason Weiner, as we stated previously, the walls are visible around the existing structure. So they are there. It's not a full, you don't get the full landscape scene of the walls, but you can see them from at least the dock.
And the bare ground certainly doesn't do much for some. B, character of the neighborhood or shoreline.
Mr. Chair, Mike Pearl. My, my comment on that is, I think in the future, it's going to impact the character of the neighborhood. Because if we allow this to be the way it's proposed, that just opens up, we've seen historically that now that the neighbors see this, now they're going to want the same thing. And it just snowballs and then pretty soon the lake is all rock and, and fences or walls.
Are you, Nick, familiar with the permits? Mr. Carlson said that you don't have to go far and there's these kinds of shoreline projects. I assume tho, those were all engineered, contracted by a contractor and permitted probably, or?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, I'm not aware of any specific examples nearby that were referenced or may have been referenced. I do know that obviously the adjacent properties, directly adjacent with very similar slopes, do not have walls like this. So in terms of a practice on a slope like that, it hasn't been replicated previously or, or installed previously on the adjacent slopes that are very similar. So beyond that, I don't, I haven't seen anything recently on that road.
Again, the question is, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories? C would be vegetative buffer.
Mr. Chair, Rich Blenkish. I would say the vegetative buffer has been removed from what I have seen out there. So, missing.
Trees and bushes, removed. D, erosion or sediment control device or system. We talked about that. There wasn't one. There evidently is today. F, fish or wildlife habitat? I don't think at this point we can, can't answer that. And G, water quality. And we probably can't answer that either. It's not going to make it better probably, but. Nine, could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration and restoring the sites? Please explain how mitigation would occur and the results of the mitigation. Could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration and restoring the sites? What I tried to say in October and what I'll try to say again now, if I were the applicant, what I would do is pretend none of this happened and we're all going to forget about this and start over and get a contractor and say, okay, here's the mess. Here's the deal. Have Nick and staff there with the contractor and say, what can we do? How are we going to do this? What do we need to remove? Start all over and do it right and do it with permits. So however you want to summarize that, that's my two cents.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, that's what I thought we were going to be doing tonight. I thought all of this stuff was going to be here and this would be a, a 15 or 20 minute thing and we'd be done with it. It'd be, but.
That was our hope. So, and, and again, to whatever degree staff needs to fully engage themselves. I mean, whatever happens here, there's no excuse. If you don't know if you can do something or not, simply call and ask, can I do this or can't I? And just stay in communication that way and staff's there to assist. They should be, and if they're not, then we need to hear that, but I don't think that was the case. Would the minimum benefits, number 10, would the minimum benefits to the county appear to be far outweighed by the detriment of the applicant would suffer if forced to restore the alteration?
Mr. Chair, Jason Weiner. So the restoration of the alteration is likely to be expensive. So they're going to be, if we deny this after the fact permit, they'll be required to remove the walls at a minimum. However, this was a substantial change to the existing vegetation on the site. Potentially a substantial destabil, the walls may appear to be stabilizing, but we have some testimony that might actually destabilize the site. And I believe we've talked about some precedential setting here where if we do approve this, it could set a precedent for others to find dramatic wall installation after the fact permits. Easier to obtain than those submitted properly. So I do believe the minimum benefits to the county, the county benefits would outweigh the detriment to the applicant.
And I think I would add that if it's done, as I suggested in number nine, started over, did it right, it's going to be better for the county and the applicant long term, in my opinion. Okay, so the findings have been completed. Again, remember, we're a recommending body. We make a recommendation to the county board. They're the ones that do the final approval or denial. So at this point, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky.
Yes. I guess I'm, I'm concerned about just where we're going here. If, if we send it back, do we have any recommendation that, of what we would approve? If you're, we're saying, well, an engine, you get an engineer, what if the engineer agrees that those three walls with their conversation are appropriate? And they just come back again with the same plan?
After going through, Mr. Commissioner Persky, not to interrupt you, but after going through two of these hearings?
Yeah.
If you don't figure it out, if an engineer says that and you don't figure out, you better get a different contractor, then there's not much help we can do for you.
Yes, and that, and that's what I mean. Are we going to make any recommendations for changes we'd like to see? Or any recommendations for what we see? I would, I would prefer making some suggestions for what we would like to see.
And I'd rather, I hate to make sausage.
I, I totally, I totally agree with you, but I don't want to see three walls again.
Correct. And I think what, and again, I could be wrong, commission members say, but again, if, if we do deny this, my recommendation is to tell the county board, go back, rework this, have staff on site, have a contract. I don't, I don't look for an engineer. I'm looking for a contractor that's licensed, that will know how to handle this. That's what, that's what everybody needs at this point and not this piecemeal stuff that we've been dealing with. And I don't want to do that here. I don't want to suggest what to do. Nick and staff are better prepared to do that and contractors than we are.
And, and Mr. Chair, I would agree. I, I think they need to come back to staff rather than just go on their own as well.
And a contractor.
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, I kind of, I'm in between all of you guys. If they get a, like Joe said, they get a contractor or an engineer and he comes back with the same thing, do we approve it? Well, they get an engineer and he approves it and you get a contractor and he approves it, then those people are supposed to be, none of our expertise is in lakeshore development or landscaping or management. So we kind of got to go along with these guys a little bit. We can't say, well, they don't know what they're talking about because we want it this way. Well, that's like if you told me how to go fishing and you knew how and I don't know how, that it doesn't, this guy, if we don't listen to the guy, if I don't listen to you and I don't catch any fish, well, it's my tough luck because I didn't. And so if we don't listen to the experts, we don't know, I have no idea how to do lakeshore. But, and none of us, I, I don't think any of us are experts. So if we leave it up to them, we have to kind of accept what they come up with and say, we can't in the end say, no, they're wrong. Can we?
And that's a good point. And staff, again, that's why I think we're all saying staff, Greg Berg, Nick, others, need to be with the contractors. But you can have engineers, I don't know if these engineers are on site or not, but somebody that's going to be onsite with staff to figure this thing out and then bring it back rather than us trying to work it through, in my opinion. I really don't want to spend any more time on this personally.
Mr. Chair, Richard Blenkish. I'd like to make a statement in regards to, okay, so you have engineers and you have landscapers. But if it's before the fact, those people would follow the ordinances that we have in regards to shoreline alterations. Now you're coming after somebody who has not followed any of our ordinances. And so if they were to follow your proposed solution for number nine, I would recommend that those individuals, if it's an engineer and a landscaper, that they also are familiar with our ordinances in regards to shoreline development.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a.
Weiner.
Jason Weiner, if I can make a motion and just see how it flies. I would recommend we deny this after the use permit application and require the applicant to return the site to the pre-wall condition with the addition that the vegetation be restored to a erosion-stable species mix. So I don't want to see sod on the site. I'd like to see some sort of deep root site stability vegetation. It would be nice if the district would approve it, but I don't know. I, I trust the staff to approve the veg mix for stabilizing the site. That would be a motion.
Mr. Chair, member Weiner, just a clarification on that. Would that vegetation mix be for the entire area that has been disturbed throughout the project? Or would it be just for certain areas adjacent to the walls?
If, so if they take, if, if the board approves my motion, they would remove the walls. They would restore the site to a pre-walled condition. And they'd have to stabilize the site using an erosion-appropriate mix. So wherever bare soil has been exposed or sod has been replaced, that would need to be covered by an appropriate veg mix.
Is there a second or a discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Persky.
Okay.
Technically, I suppose we should have a second to have discussions.
Even if we don't go that way.
I'll humor the discussion and I'll second it, even though I don't support it.
Okay, I, I was looking for clarification just to what, what the motion was intended. So that would be a total, a restoration of the property to prior to the walls. What I'm concerned about is the board maybe going off and not take, moving our recommendation then forward and doing a compromise, which would not necessarily be appropriate to the situation that we have here. In, in that, do we want to go with a denial of the existing and the, and the restoration of, of the, of the project? And then to have them come back to us with something else?
Commissioner Persky, I second the motion so we could have a discussion. Personally, I'm really disappointed in this. However, I don't think we should be ripping walls out or anything until we do what, again, I think they should do is get a contractor, get staff and then see what we can do. Can we take a foot off the wall? Can we, you know, plant some other things? And again, I don't know what that is. And I don't want to make that decision, I guess. But Jason's intent, I think, is admirable. But again, I don't think we want to micromanage this at this point, except for if we were to deny it, to say you have to get a licensed contractor and meet with staff to salvage what we can do here by a date. You suggested September 30th for the wall restructuring. So by a date, you get a contractor, you don't have to take the walls or anything down, but you have to get a contractor, you have to meet with staff and you have to come up with a plan. That, that would be more appropriate, in my opinion. But right now we have a motion by Jason on the floor. So any discussion to that motion?
So for clarification, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Jason Weiner again. So I understand the concept of the dramatic removal. The concern I have is if this goes back to staff, then it has to come back to us again to approve whatever they come unless it's less than four feet tall. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, member Weiner, so yes, under, a minor permit could be authorized to, to do the, the lowest retaining wall closer to the structure at four feet or less. And if it's not visible from the water, that lowest wall could be permitted under a minor shoreline alteration permit. But once they went beyond that, and then that was more than four feet cumulative height and it was visible from the water, it would then become an application that would come before the planning commission.
So the concern I have is if we go down the road of sending it back for a redesign, the staff can provide recommendations. It's then up to the planning commission to again have this discussion about whatever comes forward unless it's the minor alteration. And I don't see where that ends.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, member Weiner, that is correct. As staff, we can make recommendations for what could be applied for, but applicants can't apply for as large a walls as they would like to. We can't tell them where the threshold is, obviously, because it's up to the planning commission to make that decision. So as staff, we, we would need a little bit more direction to assist the property owners in meeting those specific requirements that the planning commission would require. So because it is a condition to use permit, they, they can apply for as much wall as, as they would like to. Obviously, we provide input as staff in terms of erosion control, stormwater control, things like that. It's up to the applicant to determine what they feel is necessary for that. And, and if they're, feel that it's adequate based on our input and any input from engineers or otherwise. But at the end of the day, we can't tell them exactly what, you know, needs to happen because it's up to the planning commission to make that, that final, you know, that recommendation to the board. So.
And I'm an eternal optimist, so I'm just thinking in my heart of hearts, and I don't catch on quick. If I've sat through two of these public hearings, I've heard everything that I've heard and I've talked to staff and gotten, you know, acknowledged for doing what we've done. If you can't figure out the third time, then there's no help. It'll be a quick thing. We'll do a findings of fact right at the beginning and it'll be over with. So, but I could be wrong, but again, I don't want to design it. I don't want to, you know, at this point. So hopefully, if the message hasn't been received this time, then I guess we'll do what we need to do. So the motion is, Jason, you want to restate your motion?
Removal of the four walls, restoration of the site to the pre-construction condition, followed by establishment of appropriate erosion-resistant vegetation on all exposed surfaces by September 30th, I believe the date was, 2021.
So we'll take a roll call on that motion. If you're for that motion, say aye. If you're opposed to that motion, say no. Jason Weiner.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
No.
Ken Mossman.
No.
Mike Pearl.
No.
Rich Blenkish.
Aye.
And the chair votes no, so that motion does not carry. So a motion would be in order. I'd recommend that we. I'd recommend that we make a motion to, well, or I can do it. But let's see if somebody else wants to do it. I'd make, I'd recommend that we make a motion to deny it, to have in the denial, not to allow, require the removal of the walls in return for a onsite visit with staff, a contractor, to come up with a plan that would better suit what's going on here, that they could reapply for a permit. I didn't, that's not a motion, that's a discussion.
Mr. Chair, so if we go down that route, what if we were to continue this until September 30th? With your recommendation to have a redesigned site plan? So they wouldn't have to reapply, they would have the drop-dead date of September 30th. Could we continue it again? Could we continue it again and stay within the 60-day window?
We'd have to get the continuation approval from the applicants at this point, and that's a two-second discussion. You agree with us continuing it? If they don't, we deny it. If they do, then we continue it to a date certain, and then we could pursue that. And I personally would be open to that.
Mr. Chair members, the applicants have signed for the application to be continued indefinitely. So there's, we're not on a timeline for the decision.
We've got that. Okay? So, and I'm, I'm open to that, Jason.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, I would be open to that also, that sounds like plan.
It's saving them the reapplication and re-permitting, and it's hopefully getting the message through. We need to do something, take the wall down, get, you know, get some vegetation restarted and all the things we talked about. So let's do a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd be with that too, as long as, in that plan would be toning it down to those walls, beating the four-foot, removing that 10-inch.
Okay. I think the only thing we don't want to do, Jason, is, or members, is let this go, I mean, it was October. So it's October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June, July. It's 10 months. We don't want to continue this forever. I mean, if you're gonna do it, we want to get that shoreline button up. So should we use the September 30th date or what date?
Mr. Chair, can we say at the latest date? Because if they got on this, it would be better sooner than later.
Right.
They could get something done so that they don't do like, last year, they'll wait another three months and then, well, then they're running out of time to do things this fall.
Nick looks like he wants to say something.
Mr. Chair members, we could make that date August 16th to come back for the September 16th planning commission meeting, if, if you chose to do that.
Okay. And then again, if that doesn't happen, then we deal with the denial at that point. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Somebody, Commissioner Persky.
Again, I don't, I don't want to keep this horse being whipped, but if, if we send, send it back to the, to them without any direction, what I'm, I'll tell you what, I can't live with those three walls. I can't live with what, what, the damage that was done. And if that, I mean, if that comes back, I'm, I'm not gonna be in support of that.
And again, the direction they're hearing it from you, who's gonna vote on the ultimate application? Their staff is hearing you and everything we said, applicants are hearing everything. It's really all we can do without outright denying it in August.
So do we have to make a motion to that?
Yeah. I think Jason had it figured out, no? I have faith in you.
Yeah, I could state with the motion, the language, but it would not be appropriate for me at this time to make the motion.
Okay.
So the recommendation would be to continue until the September meeting with the August 16th deadline for- Sorry, everybody.
Deb is telling us to talk louder, that's why we're laughing because she's-
She's giving me the hand sign. So it-
Go closer.
So it would be the, they would have a plan to the county staff by August 16th for presentation to the planning commission at their September 16th meeting. And if somebody else would like to make that motion, that would be the language.
Mr. Chair members, just, just for clarification, for the purpose of the continuation, the planning commission is seeking, from my understanding, addressing the walls' dimensions on the site? Number of walls or size of the walls?
Number of wall, height of the wall.
Length of the wall.
And vegetation. The restoration of vegetation, the bushes and trees that were cut out.
I did like the idea with the retaining pods, and that's a good idea with such a slope, but something like that should be incorporated into some water management.
And if you, if the staff is onsite and you have questions, certainly you can, you know, you've seen which members have the most deepest feelings. You certainly can talk to them and say, what did you mean when you were saying that? We've got, I've got about 125 pages of the two public hearings now. So again, I'll be more than happy to participate and help, like, read it to anybody that doesn't get this. So I think we got enough information, we just have to make it happen at this point. So-
Clarification?
Make the motion?
Yes, I, Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I make the motion that we continue this to August 15th?
No, it would be the September with the application.
September 16th then for our meeting, yes.
Being submitted.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Okay, I guess I'll second it. So there's been a motion and a seconded to do what we just reviewed that we were gonna do. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye when I call your name. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Weinerman?
Nay.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Nay.
The chair votes aye. So the recommendation is what we just talked about. Okay, item number four. Consider after-the-fact request, a major shoreline alteration permit submitted by NMH Properties, Avon, Nick Newman. Is he gonna do that one?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, so this is another continued item from a couple months ago. This one is out on Fifth Lake Road in Albany Township. The property owner had done extensive dirt work within two, within double the setback area of the natural environment lake, Fifth Lake, which triggered the after-the-fact major shoreline alteration permit requirement. After the last meeting, the applicant was directed to provide a plan for erosion control and sediment control on the site. No plan was received from the applicant before the previous meeting deadline, and then no additional information was provided after that, after the next deadline for this meeting. So the applicant didn't provide any additional information for the request. We did receive a letter from the township regarding the driveway. That is found in the packet as well. The, where the driveway was constructed was not approved by the township. Just for clarification, the driveway can be covered under a construction site permit from the county, but because this violation of the area where the excavation took place on the site is still an ongoing violation, we, we cannot issue the construction site permit for that to take place. But the, the material that was moved has been moved. There was erosion control put down, and there is silt fence that was put on the property after meeting with staff in, in late May. And you can see that in the staff report, supporting information page. All of the correspondence and site visits are listed there. A decision for recommendation of approval or denial is required at tonight's meeting. The 60 days plus the 60-day extension would put it at August 16th, which means that the planning commission does need to make that decision tonight to go to county board for their next meeting.
Okay? Is that it?
Uh, that is it.
Thank you. So members that visited the site, if you visited the site this time, say yes. If you did, say no. Jason Weinerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And so did I. Is the applicant with us in person or representative of the applicant? On WebEx or in person? Nope? Okay. I see members of the Albany Township here. Is there anyone else here for this application? Don't be bashful, guys, you want to share something with us or not really? Oh, Diane's going to.
My name is Diane Knoll. I live at 20929 330th Street, and my property abuts this property. I am speaking tonight as a neighbor, not as a clerk for the township. So about two years ago, we heard dirt being moved on this property, and it was for a dirt track. And Mr. Blankish, you had stated earlier that this is not conducive to the quiet neighborhood we live in, and you're right. But we've had this happen numerous times in our community, and it seems like it goes on for three years, the kid grows up, it gets done and over with. So we just ignored it, figured, you know, let the kids have their fun. But then this spring, we noticed and heard a lot of movement over there, just a lot. And we're like, well, what's going on? And then one morning, I got up about 5:30, and there were lights over there so they could work in the dark. This was, this was in April. And I'm like, I'm confused. That's when I contacted the county and said, they have a permit, you know, I just want to know. If they have a permit, I don't care. And that's when this mess hole started. So we, we're not against him putting up a shed, we're not against him putting this track in for his kids, but we want him to comply, just like we had to comply, just like all our neighbors have to comply. And that's what our concern is. We, you know, we don't want to be mean neighbors, but just comply with what's going on. And now going back to being a clerk of the township, you did receive our letter from our attorney. So that's all I'm gonna say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Greer, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Bertram, members of the planning commission, Commissioner Persky, staff members at Stearns County, John Greer, 21352 St. Anna Drive, Albany. I'm a member of the Albany Township Board of Commissioners. We're here at the request of Angie Berg, Supervisor of Environmental Services, to provide information to the planning commission regarding the status of the driveway issue for this property owner. The, the issue was brought to our planning commission in April. It was considered by the planning commission, they did a site visit. They recommended denial of the, the application for the after-the-fact permit for the driveway access. They recommended it be removed and that there be an evaluation as to where the appropriate location should be. The Board of Supervisors did that. We reviewed the issue for the first time in April at our April meeting. We had a site visit of the site at the same time as our annual road tour in early May. We looked at site distances. There's a hill there, as you know, you've been to the site. We were concerned about whether or not there was adequate distance for stopping for anybody coming north to south when they approached that hill, that, that was sort of a blind access. So at our May meeting, we recommended denial of the request for the after-the-fact permit at its existing location, but we recommended that it instead be installed at the location across from the, from the driveway across Fifth Lake Road, right there. We recommended that it be located there. There's, there's actually an apron there in the pavement, and there's also a path. It's been used before as an access, although there's no actual constructed access there. There, it's, there's a path that shows that it's been used before for an access. There's also an access to this property to the, further to the north along the property line with the Knoll property. Right at that property line, there's another access that has been used by the property owner. We felt that the side across this road from the, from the neighbor would be the appropriate location for safety reasons and because there's already a path there, there's already an apron in the pavement there. We, we took that action at our May meeting. Our relationship with the applicant became adversarial. He then subsequently sent us a letter, or rather, an email on June 21st indicating that he was refusing to move the driveway. And he felt, and his reasoning was that he felt we had violated the 60-day rule. Our attorney, Mr. Curry, responded on July 2nd indicating that, that an, an access permit is not subject to the 60-day rule, it's not a land use issue, so that's not applicable. We've also informed him through our attorney that we were going to be fining him $200 a month starting August 1st, if it's not removed by August 1st, for, for the, the current location of the driveway. Needs to be removed, can be installed at, at the appropriate location, in our view. So that's the status as we know it today regarding the access to his property. And I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Persky?
Yes, Mr. Greer, we'd heard comments about the track earlier, and we have got that environmental lake there, and in your opinion, it, does that track pose any environmental threat or any issues with the, with the, the lake as, as far as its proximity?
Not in my opinion.
Supervisor Greer.
Thank you. John Greer, not in my opinion, the location of that track is at the north end of the property. It's, it's quite a distance from the lake. So I don't think that would have an impact on, on the lake. But it does have an impact on the neighbors.
Yeah, okay.
And, and- Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry. Does, when, I, I was at the site visit, going down from the, the, the site that the building was going to go on, there seemed to be some excavation done there. And, and, but that was relatively close to some of the wetland down there. Is that part of the track?
No, no, that's, that's the, that's the building site, I believe, that you're referring to.
But I'm talking actually down below from where the building site is. I don't know which compass direction that was.
I'm not familiar with-
Okay. And, well, let me ask staff. Nick, do you know what I'm talking about? It's coming down, down the hill from the, I don't know if we have a picture of the, of the building location.
I think he's asking if you know what he's talking about.
Now, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, I'm not certain exactly to where you're referring to.
So this was the building location?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, wasn't there some excavation down in this area here? Did we see some down there? Or was it down in this area now?
It was, it was where you are now, from what I remember, further, whatever direction that is.
My guess, if you're looking, if you don't mind me guessing, I think that's some of the, the location where he took soil and transported for his building site, I believe, is what he, is what we were told.
Okay.
Mr. Chair members, that where, area, the blue dot there is, is roughly where that excavation took place out of the hill, and there was more dirt work done to the north, directly to the north of that dot. And then that dirt bike track starts right to the north of that.
Okay, right. And, and just my, my question is then, any of that excavation that was done there, was that, you know, environmentally detrimental to the, to the lake? Do we, do we know that or I think that?
Mr. Chair members, no, that's located approximately 250 to 300 feet plus from the water, and there is a pretty substantial vegetation buffer between that area and the lake. And the topography is not that steep for a good portion of that area. So runoff and sediment leaving that area is not of a concern to the water.
Okay, thank you. Nick, was the contractor fined and has the fine been paid?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, the contractor did pay the $1,000 fine and submitted that application to become a licensed shoreline contractor. So they have fulfilled that responsibility that they had as, as not being a licensed contractor. So that is paid and they did submit that application for it.
Thank you. And Supervisor Greer, all things being equal, hypothetically, if we were to deny it- And Supervisor Greer, um, all things being equal hypothetically, if we were to deny it, you think that would be an appropriate, uh, response to have the applicant get everything in order with the township, have the township review everything, and then come back with something if that's in fact what he wants to do? I, I feel uncomfortable proving something at this level when you guys got your mess on your end.
I can appreciate that, Chairman Bertram. Um, it's, it's our opinion, he needs to clear up the, the access issue. And, and it seems to me that if he's going to be doing further excavation, he, he should do it through an approved access. Because he's going to be bringing equipment in and out to do that. So, it seems like appropriate that that would be the first step or the next step in the process for him to get right with these permits.
So, I mean, my, my sense is that that's-
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, this is just like the last one. Isn't that why we came here tonight?
Yep.
We were supposed to hear-
Yep.
The plan was supposed to be presented to us and now-
No plan. We have to do something, we have to be more clear, maybe.
Big hammer?
Yeah. Speak and wail or something. Thank you. Yep. Anybody else here that wants to say something? You, you'll need to, you'll need to come up here, I'm sorry. I can hear you and I'd be okay with it, but staff will go nuts. State your name and, uh-
Tim, you know that I live at 34234 Metaview Drive, Albany, uh, member of Albany Township. Uh, we did, along with this, uh, deny the, uh, access that he put in. But then we also granted him another additional access, uh, where the existing one is, uh, where they've been using, plus the north one. So, he does have two, uh, locations now that we granted him already. So, as far as we're concerned, um, if he comes back with an application, he can make it for one of those two spots, we're fine with that. Um, now it's up to you guys. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else here or on WebEx that wants to say something? If not, closing the public hearing would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, so moved to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Richard Blankish, I'll second that.
Motion's been made, seconded, have closed the public hearing, any discussion? If not, if you're in favor, say aye, if you're not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, public hearing's closed. Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, um, I was intrigued on the application. So, under the staff report, um, item number 10, the applicant indicates they're waiting 60 days for the permit to expire. Um, and then, under his notification, the applicant says, um, "It was never my intention to venture outside the bounds of what is permitted." And we heard from the township board where they've questioned the 60-day permit on the township. We seem to have an applicant who's willing to work the system here. And is willing to play games with the 60-day notice. Um, and that has me concerned, um, for good intentions moving forward, should we grant this kind of applicant an approval.
However, if we deny it, that would take care of it, wouldn't it? Hypothetically.
I think we'll get out.
Let's do the findings. Number one, can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality, improve aesthetics, control erosion, enhance habitat? If it makes it simple, I'm going to say no, 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 no. But somebody might want to add to that.
I think you're correct.
Two, why did the applicant fail to obtain the alteration permit or comply with the requirements before commencing work?
Mr. Chair, according to the applicant's, um, letter of reasoning, he did not know. Um, and then he intended to run out the 60-day clock after he had done so.
Three, did the applicant obtain all other required permits and comply with all other require, uh, requirements?
Mr. Chair, Richard Blankish, no he didn't.
Including the township access one. Four, is the alteration in a sensitive area shore, bluff, impact zone, wetland buffer, county biological survey site, or other documented high-value habitat? The environmental lake certainly would be, come to mind. Five, is the alteration visible from the lake or public water? Describe the degree to which it is visible.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, I don't think from the lake, I don't think you can see much of anything that he's doing there.
Six, does the alteration affect the character of the neighborhood or will it result in a substantial detriment to the neighboring properties? Based on testimony, I would say yes. Seven, did the alteration reduce or eliminate existing buffer between the order, ordinary highway wa, uh, high water level, water, and impervious surfaces or create more direct conduit for stormwater to flow into the public waters? I really don't know if it was a water issue.
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
Eight, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories? Describe the change. Aesthetics? How it looks like from the public water? Probably no. Character of the neighborhood? Yes. Vegetation buffer? Well, kind of made a parking lot. Erosion or sediment control device or system? No.
No.
Stormwater management device or system? Nope. Fish or wildlife? Nope. Water quality? Not that we know of. Nine, could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration and restoring the site? I would say yes. Everybody agree?
They agree.
Okay.
That's why we're here tonight, that-
Yep. Uh, 10, would the minimum benefits of the county appear to far outweigh the detriment of the applicant would suffer if forced to restore the alteration, may or may not? I think we should add, uh, benefits to the county, township appear to far outweigh.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just for the record, the applicant's not here to indicate any detriment to their behalf.
And so, the benefit to the county and township would be greater with denial. Okay? Findings are done, motion would be in order. Commissioner Persky?
Is there any other pertinent information? Was, do we just want to mention he was unlicensed?
We could do that, contractor was unlicensed and has been fined, paid the fine, and now is licensed. There isn't actually a question about pertinency, so that's why I didn't ask him, but good point. Thank you for bringing that up. I think they cut that one off maybe. Okay? So, motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we deny this conditional use permit based on the finding of the facts.
Rich makes a motion to recommend denial.
Mr. Chair, Mike Perrell, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Mike Perrell seconds it. Any discussion on that motion? If not, if you're in favor of recommending denial to the county board, say aye when I call your name. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, recommendation of a denial, the county board unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Good luck. Next order of business is various project updates. Nick Newman?
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, um, just wanted to give an update on some of the past projects that had, um, violations that had happened previously. Uh, the Planning Commission kind of requested an update on some of these here. The first one I will, um, state would be the, uh, formerly FAF or Findon property, which is located on Little Cedar Island Lake, off of County Road 71. This is the one that was about two from the bridge. So, there was an, an agreement in place for vegetation planting to obscure some of the retaining walls that were built. Um, that, some of the planting is complete on that. I was out there about two weeks ago. Erosion control blanket is down on everything, some plugs were planted, some, um, seed was broadcasted. Um, and there's still some more that needs to happen. We've been in correspondence with both the contractor and the property owner stating what additionally needs to be done. Um, part of that is, uh, vegetation above the first wall that would hang down and, and obscure some of that first wall. So, that is in progress, there has been progress been made, but it's not quite complete yet. Uh, the second one, uh, was the drowned property on Crooked Lake.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Persky?
Just Nick, with that FAF property, was there, was there a sand blanket that was going to come up as well? Did-
Yep. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that sand blanket has been removed. So, that's all been removed and that area has been vegetated, well, planted at least.
That's good. And, and then also compliance on the-
Commissioner Persky?
Thank you. And then compliance on the impervious was, is that remaining issue or has that also been resolved?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that has been, um, planted with grass, so that is now not considered impervious. And that does meet the 25% impervious coverage limit for the lot. So, that, that's been actually completed for a little while now.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you, staff, appreciate that.
And I can ask it now, so what's the follow-up on all these that you're going to update? I mean, obviously, there's going to be some kind of follow-up six months from now or something, or?
Yep, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, uh, once, uh, you know, substantial additional progress is made, I mean, we're going to be in correspondence with both the contractor and property owner. You know, definitely on a monthly basis or, or more until this is completed. At that point, you know, we can then inform the Planning Commission once that's complete, you know, as a follow-up. So, um, it's kind of the plan.
It'll be ongoing.
Yep.
Okay. So, the second one was drowned?
Yep, on Crooked Lake, uh-
The clear cut?
County 145 vegetation removal, um, from that area, up slope of the wetland. That planting plan had, um, was submitted, approved, and then they did complete that planting. Trees, plugs, and seed was planted there and that was all planted into erosion control blanket. That is all complete and that is all, um, as approved in the approved plan. So, that is all completed now on that project. Uh, the next one is the Nelson property on Big Fish Lake on Alexander Lane.
Another clear cut?
Uh, yep, this one was the extensive tree removal to the lake. Uh, that compliance agreement required 70 trees. All of those have been planted, uh, sprinkler system, they have a sprinkler system that was used to water the trees, which was important this year with, with, with those. But everything has been planted, the species were correct, the spacing was correct. That all checks out. And those are, um, you know, inspections will take place every two years. So, the next inspection out there for that will be in 2023. That happens for 10 years.
If you want mine, uh, when you do inspections or follow-ups on these, I'd love to see a before and after photo, if you want mine.
Sure, we can, we can do that.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, and Nick, on that property, um, there were some large trees that established that shoreline. And I think those, uh, stumps were holding that shoreline together. Those will, the property owners knows that those must stay, correct?
Yep, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the property owners have been informed multiple occasions that all those stumps need to remain there. The root systems that remain, um, obviously hold that bank in place throughout that whole shoreline. So, those all are required to stay. No additional topographic alterations are, are allowed in a lot of that area because it's a drainage and utility easement, so that is going to stay with, within that area. So, the roots will remain, the stumps won't be taken out. That has been made clear.
Okay.
Uh, and then the last one, uh, was, uh, the Dave Fay, uh, site on Rice Lake. Um, this was the one with the retaining wall across the slope. Um, this conditional use permit application was denied to extend the wall the entire length of the slope. And that one has been referred to the county's attorney's office for, uh, enforcement. So, that's where that one's at right now.
So, they're non-compliant?
Correct.
Got it. And you'll keep us in the loop on that one? Okay? Anything else?
Uh, those are all of them.
Thank you. Uh, I didn't have a chance to look at my notes if that covers everything or not, but my memory it does. So, if it doesn't, we'll deal with those some other time. Next action would be minutes. In our packet, on our agenda, it says, um, different dates, these are the minutes that are in our packet. May 20th, we can do this in one motion, I assume, Heidi. Minutes for May 20th, 2021, May 24th, 2021, and June 17th, 2021. Are those the right dates? That's what the minutes are dated that we have in our packet, which is different than the m- I just want to make sure I got the right dates. May 20th, 24th, and June 17th.
Yeah, I think those are, what you're saying is correct.
Okay. So, there'd be a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Sean moves. Approve the three minute.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, I'll second that.
Ken Mossman seconds it. Um, any discussion? If not, if you're in favor, say aye, if you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, minutes are approved. Other discussion, other issues?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at the end of last meeting, I brought up the word existing and they still misspell existing this month. They've still got exiting. Everybody's exiting the county. It's-
Oh, my God.
Under staff analysis, it says the proposal compatible with the exiting neighborhood.
Okay.
And I just think a county should, should at least get the words all right.
Thank you, Ken. I'm sure they'll work on that.
We'll see next month.
There you go.
Next one's going to be exciting.
Yes.
Other issues?
Yes, I'd like to bring up this issue of-
Commissioner Blankish?
Sorry about that. In regards to, um, solar energy, solar gardens, solar farms in, with our county. I don't know how many of you follow news articles and whatever, whatever source your information is coming from, but it seems like as time has gone on, in the short time I've been on the board here, about three and a half years, it seems more and more information is coming out in regards to the solar farms, materials that are being used, procedures, all of those kind of things. And it seems, you know, relatively fast-paced and I'm just thinking, personally, I thought maybe as a county, we need to take a deep breath and take a pause. What's going on? And any value weight? What we've been doing, where we're headed? With recent legislation that's being passed at the national level, you know we're going to get a lot of pressure in our county. And I'm, I'm thinking long range. What do we want our county to look like? You know? From what it is now, what it potentially could end up being. So, um, I'm just throwing this out for discussion, but I just have some concerns about that. And maybe we could do something in regards to, um, making a motion or sending something to our county board.
Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, um, my question would be, what are our options of what could we do? How could we address that? Ideas?
Well, I don't know how many of you, I don't know if you guys checked your emails this afternoon, but I got a, uh, email from Painsel Township that I copied in case you guys didn't get it. Yeah, and I, when she sent it, I sent it back and said, I'm not sure what you sent, but I couldn't see it. So, she resent something this afternoon. If somebody, Heidi, here's your copy for staff. So, Painsel Township is asking for a moratorium on any future applications. They, they, they were unaware that there was going to be administrative approvals now. So, that concerned them. And, oh, by the way, um, some of you, uh, had heard about the request. I requested applications of solar applications that when they were made, I wanted an application of it right up front. I was told that wasn't public information. And today, um, Chuck, or I'm sorry, um, Chad May, the county attorney, assistant county attorney, said that it is public information and that anybody can get that information in a timely manner. Of course, thinking one- Of course, thinking one step ahead, I told him, you better clarify with staff, timely matter isn't five weeks after it's gotten. So he said he'd take care of that. But that part of that isn't, you know, as of today, Mr. May said that that information is public and will be shared immediately upon receipt. So, but they're recommending a moratorium. I know I've talked to at least two commissioners that have said maybe we should just get our arms around this and really figure out what and how we want to do this. So I guess their letter's timely to what you're saying and what a couple of commissioners have been saying, so.
Chair, I believe with the super, with the board members, we are going to have a workshop on solar and we're going to have some discussion on that. And I think it's timely to do that because I think between members on the board and members here in this commission, we're struggling with the appropriateness of a number of issues around solar, absolutely. So, and I'm just wondering now, Shelley, under the present process, do the, will the townships, do the townships have input at all on this or not? The present condition now of approving solar gardens?
Not on the...
Shelley Benson.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, not under the current process with administrative applications.
Okay.
They would not be provided information, but on a second site where it would be an interim use permit now, they would receive notice.
And beyond that, Commissioner Persky, the township won't receive notice. We won't receive, obviously, we won't deal with it. County Board won't deal with it and the drowning landowners won't be made aware of it.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So Shelley, so then on the first one, it's a conditional use, so it would be approved through staff. And, but then on the second one, on the same property, then it would have to come to the township? Is that what you're saying?
It would go through the process that it did before, which would be an interim use permit since we changed them from conditional use to interim use. And at that point, the township would be notified of that one megawatt application. So remember, these are only one megawatt solar applications that are being allowed on a, as a first one megawatt. It's the second megawatt or subsequent megawatts that would be required to go through an interim use permit.
And Commissioner Persky, I'm glad to hear that you're talking about a working session or something, but I listened to the last two board meetings, parts of it. The only thing I would ask is, and I don't know if we do this, if the commission agrees, I would really create a committee and I would have townships involved, certainly some of us. Yep, I have strong feelings about it and I have a reason for it, but others that are more pro certainly as well. But, and then the industry, I think, you know, I've heard that, you know, bringing one in this, one company in in particular, well, if I'd be, there's 40-some solar farms and there's 30-some companies, that could get a little dicey. I don't know if we need a PR thing for, from companies. I think we should have county, you know, state, national county folks that are aware of things and, you know, I don't know that we need industry types necessarily because, of course, they're going to advocate for it. But just a cross-section of people that are for, against, there's a lot of public people out there that don't know. Painsel Township, you know, the super, the supervisors talked to me and they said, we don't know what we can do. You know, we don't know, you know, and that kind of caught me off guard because you think they'd kind of know, but they really don't know. Well, I said, you can start by writing a letter. So they did. And that's only one township. They have the most solar farms, but that's only one township. I would say the Township Association would want to be represented as well.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, and don't get me wrong, I'm not in opposition to solar, but the intentions of sometimes the developers, it's not about what's, it's green energy. It's not the environment. It's the green dollar that's, I think, the motivating force.
And I think what we all can agree on, we've had recommendations from this Planning Commission, seven to nothing to deny, and we've had a lot of four to three or five to two recommendations to deny, and they've all been approved. So certainly nobody can say Sterns County isn't for solar. We've got over 40 farms, so that vote has sailed, I think. But how many more, how, where do we go with this? I think that's a legitimate discussion, so I think, I don't think you'd be, as a commissioner, you'd be opposed to us recommending something. If it be a moratorium or, and creating a committee or something, you wouldn't be opposed to that, I would say.
I mean, you have that right. I mean, you're a board.
Okay. So, I mean, if that's what somebody wants to do, we can do that.
Being I brought it up, this is Richard Blankish. I would make a motion as a Planning Commission. We send a recommendation to the county board that we would like to see a moratorium so that we can have more discussion and planning for the county in regards to solar, wind energy, all of the green energy.
Okay. There's a motion?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I will second that motion.
Okay. Is, have there been any applications received by the county? Or administrative approval?
For the administrative one, we have three incomplete applications right now.
Yep, they'll be coming to you. Plus, we have the accessory applications, so those don't all come for you.
When you say, Heidi, coming to you, the Planning Commission?
No, to you, that you requested.
For your data requests.
For your data request.
And when you say not complete, is that because you're still within that 15-day of completing them?
Not all the information has been submitted yet. Well, the information they've submitted isn't everything we need yet, so.
Just get a load of that, guys. There's three applications now. Boom. What, so how long does it take you to administratively approve them?
It will take a while. I am...
Month? Two months?
It depends how long it takes them to get us the information. It depends, you know, soil and water reviews, the seeding plans, some of these sites require DNR review. That takes a long time. I imagine it's going to be multiple months on most of these before we can approve them.
And you do understand my request isn't to get all that done, it's the application right up front?
Sure.
Is what I'm looking for. And again, well, I'm not going to make any bones while I'm doing it. If it's across the street from Ken Mossman, I'm going to tell Ken that at least you know that there's a solar application in the process until we get this thing. Because again, it could be right across the street from somebody and they won't even know it. Or a township, or at least they'll have some input. So, but again, the intent is and the request is to receive it timely.
Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion and a second. Ken?
Okay, so if we put a moratorium, could that stop them? The way the commissioners have it set up now, that they can just get the first one, would that be a, will be able to stop the first one? Or would the moratorium just be able to stop the second ones when they'd be having to ask for...
And the intent, I don't know what the intent is, but my understanding is like these three administratively approved applications, that they would not be stopped because they're already in the process. That would be my interpretation. I'm not a attorney.
Right.
However, any future moratorium, Wright County did this.
Can you override what they've already, commissioners have approved?
No. Anything, an immediate moratorium would stop everything right now moving forward, the way I understand it. And Wright County did do that. They got their act together and then they opened them up again. They did some revisions and so, and Methal County's been denying most of them. So, I mean, every, other counties are doing other things and I don't know what that all is. That's the information that Joe, I mean, your Minnesota Association of Counties and your National Association of Counties, I think Commissioner Lenzmeyer said that in the last meeting, they're a lot smarter about all this than we are because they've been exposed to this for a lot longer. What are they doing? What have they done? We don't know that. We've just approved them.
My idea is if we give them more of a problem on the, on the second one, if they know that going forward, maybe they won't take the easy road for the first one because if they put the first one in and have a problem getting the second one, that'll cut into the, into the profit.
Yeah, certainly could. Certainly, certainly, certainly could. Any other comments? We've got a motion before us. If not, motion's been made second to recommend a immediate moratorium or did, is that the intent?
Yes.
Okay. Recommend to the county board immediate moratorium. And there was another part of that? Or wasn't there?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Oh, the working group. Do you want to do the working group?
Make that a separate...
A separate motion?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So motion's been made seconded to recommend a immediate moratorium on solar farm applications. Any discussion? If not, if you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so five to one. I recommend an immediate moratorium on solar applications to the county board at their July 27th meeting. Recommending, yep. And then do you want to do a separate one for the committee?
Yes.
Recommend that the county board, I don't know...
Mr. Chair?
Create a...
Can we just clarify that motion? Was that all green energy or just solar gardens or all solar? Or what was the intent with that?
When I stated, oh, this is Richard Blankish. When I stated, I said solar gardens, wind energy, any other green energy?
Yeah. Okay, so including accessory solar, the individual solar for homes? That, that was the clarification we want?
I don't think you have to get county approval for a solar panel on your home.
Yes, you do.
You do.
Really?
You need a permit for ground-mounted or roof-mounted solar panels for your home.
And I don't think, I mean, personally, as somebody who voted in affirmative, that doesn't concern me and I don't know if that was on your radar either.
No, I was thinking more of the industrial settings.
Yep, so that clarifies it.
Solar gardens and wind farm, or solar farms and wind farms and, not, so, okay.
Um, the committee part. With, you know, and are you open that, Commissioner Persky, like township people, Planning Commission people, you know, folks that pro, con?
Well, I mean, yeah, that would come back to the board and I would think it would be questionable what we would like for the...
How large of a committee are you talking here?
Well, we've had quite a few of them, but ten to fifteen. Wind, we had that one with wind energy. We met at Plattehaw, you know, over a course of period of time, and we've done other ones. Can't remember what other...
You'd want a broad spectrum of people involved in that committee from the county level or do you want to go outside the county?
Well, I would recommend to the county board, use, go beyond the county for information, but as far as part of the committee, I would think you'd want to stay within the county.
Citizens of the committee.
Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman here. For the last moratorium, do we have to put a period of time or can you make that indefinite?
Eighteen months is the maximum.
We're just, that's the county board's...
Oh, that's theirs? Okay.
We're just asking, suggesting that.
She's saying eighteen months is the max.
Mr. Chair, if you're talking about a committee there too, I, I mean, I would say, you know, we're make, you'd make something, your motion would be something fairly vague and, you know, I think the board would come up with something that would be appropriate. You know, we don't need to put a number on it, I don't think, because I don't, I think it'll probably get worked out between staff and the board. If you want, that's the way they want to go.
Okay. So did you make the motion? I can't remember now. Okay. Creating a committee?
Okay, I make a motion that we suggest to the county board that they create a committee in regards to solar energy, wind energy. Pardon?
Speak up.
Oh, I'll get this in my, okay, now can we hear? All right. So I'll restate that we make a motion that the county commissioners create a committee to oversee the, what do we, how do we want to put this?
Solar and industrial solar and wind?
To review what the county is doing with solar, wind power, energy.
Okay. There's a motion?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. The, what I'm struggling with in terms of the discussion we're having right now is we did this. It's called our strategic plan and it was done six to nine months ago. It seems a little early to jump into this right now. I mean, that, that's just, that's the reason I'm opposed to this. I just wanted to put that on the record.
And that's, that's a legitimate question, but I think we all saw things kind of explode, like even having three administrative approval shocks me, even though this has been going fast. That kind of shocks me that it's going. And the last one was denied by the county board. So, I mean, things have changed even since we've done that.
Since we finished that, yes.
And we, like I said, one of ours was unanimously recommended denial. A lot of them have been four to three, five to two. That's evolved and changed and then now we got the board that actually did deny one. So things are fluid right now, I think, so. But it's a legitimate point. So motion second. Any further discussion? If not, if you're in favor of creating a committee, recommending creating a committee, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, six, five to one. Recommend approval of a committee. No further business before us?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair. Good to see everyone. It's nice to be back in, into a chair where we can actually look at each other instead of a screen, so.
Yes, it is.
Nice to see this.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Whoa, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just wanted to introduce you to Michaela back here. She's the newest member of the Land Use Team. Dave Canoflo retired back in March, so she just started this week, so you'll probably start seeing her periodically.
Couldn't have one?
We were, we were all waiting to find out why she was here and now we know. I pegged her as an attorney for that fourth application. I thought, she's a young attorney cutting their teeth on it. Okay, thanks, welcome. Meeting adjourned.
Have a thing. We've got another quarter to go.